Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. May we all stand for prayer and by... ...for the love of God and by compliment of the Lord.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community, may you strong sense of justice and fair play be with all we do. Above all, we seek out and give hope. Give us strength to follow it regardless of our own considerations.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the following four persons one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular reading of the City Council as incorporated in the annual meeting noted of 2013 which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on bulletin board on December 27th, 2012 and sent to Star Ledger and home news review in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law of New Jersey. Public speaking. Any resident or tax payer would like to address City Council with any matter, please step forward, state your name and address the record. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Frederick Roddick Lewis. My address is 1104 Parkers Road, Sheridan, New Jersey. And I'm a First Amendment church employee at Rochester. Good afternoon.
Aye.
Yes.
I have a question. How many of you were born in another country and moved to Elizabeth as children? How many of your parents moved here from another country? Well, I want you to know why they moved here. If you don't know, ask them. Were they looking for better jobs? Were they happy with the life in their home country? Did they want to give you a better chance, a better education at the Rockford Heights? If you answer yes to any of these questions, then you are truly a member of our city of Elizabeth. As I said, I'm a First Amendment church employee who is right next to the county courthouse of Rochester. And our district is a cemetery today with over 3,000 people buried there. And many of these people were just like you are today. They came from other countries in the hope of finding a new and better life right here in Elizabeth, New Jersey. Did you know that many of the people buried there had the day in order of decision on what they'd fight for for the new lives they found in our family or went away? The year 1776, the American Revolution was beginning, and this city was one of the most important places during the struggle. During the war, British soldiers stayed just across the arc of Billingshead Island, and they would send troops to raid the farms and burn buildings. And by the end of the war, Elizabeth was almost formally destroyed. But our street never gave up. The people of Bedlam surrendered. The strength of our city is one of the main reasons the American Revolution succeeded and the United States exists today. Did you know how important your city was in the American Revolution? George Washington himself said that no place in the United States suffered war than Elizabeth. Our nation is here because of us. Now, another question. How many of you are Roman Catholics? Did you know that in 1737, the first Roman Catholic Church in Elizabeth, St. Mary's, opened its doors? But at that time, there were many people who did not like the Roman Catholic Church. A large mob gathered at St. Mary's in 1837 to try and burn it down. But what happened next was very war. Many of the women of St. Mary's came down to church, holding their babies and facing the mob. And the minister at the First Amendment Church, Nicholas Murray, came and stood with the women. Reverend Murray said that Roman Catholics had a right to be in Elizabeth as anyone else. The mob left. And Elizabeth became known as a city that welcomed people and their background. Today, did you know that Elizabeth is the most diverse city in New Jersey? There are more people of more nationalities here than any place else in our state. We are much more proud of those residents. We live in a very historic and important city in our state and in our nation. In fact, Elizabeth is where the first college was assembled in the year 1664. Yes, that's the place. Your city is where New Jersey began. Next year is 2014, and aside from some like the Super Bowl, our city and state are celebrating our 350th anniversary. And it's my hope that schools of Elizabeth will take an active part in learning and leading the anniversary. You are among the leaders of those schools. And I hope that when you go back to your classes tomorrow, you will talk to your history teachers and your principals and ask them to get involved. You're going to get a saved year card that has the names and addresses of some of the people leaving the 350th project. I hope that you will urge your schools, your friends, your families, your churches to get involved and be involved yourself. We want to let everyone know that no matter where you've come from or how long your family has been here, the people of Elizabeth share an important and remarkable history which makes us truly one special community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else would like to address City Council with any matter? Step forward, state your name and address the record. And a closed portion of the meeting. Public hearing.
Ordinance number 4374. Amend Chapter 5.102.20 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Regulation Governing Rates of Taxicap Fares Specifically to Increase Fares Due to Cost of Fuel Insurance and Car Maintenance. Ordinance number...
Anyone like to speak on ordinance number 4374? Anyone like to speak on ordinance number 4374? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4375. Amend Chapter 5.112 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Traveling Shows and Kitty Rides Specifically to Establish Section 5.112.100, the exemption from the requirements of licensure of amusement, kiddie ride, or kiddie ride operator licensed by the NJ Department of Community Affairs pursuant to NJAC 5014A-1 and so on.
Anyone like... Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4375? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4375? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4376. Amend Chapter 7.52 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Retail Food Establishments Specifically to More Accurately Reflect Business Establishments Operating Within the City and Establishment of Late Fees and Reinspection Surcharge.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4376? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4376? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4377. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Penn Ave Urban Renewal LLC, 715 through 733 Pennsylvania Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption from the construction of a six-story residential building at set address and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an approximate amount of $200,000 compared to the current $38,000.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4377? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4377? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4378. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Parker's Walker Urban Renewal LLC, 1970 Brunswick Avenue, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption for the construction of eight buildings at 202 Park Road and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4378? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4378? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4379. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Heritage Village at Westminster Urban Renewal LLC, 1970 Brunswick Avenue, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption for the construction of a four-story building for senior citizens at 230 Park Road and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4379? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4379? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4380. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement and access agreement with the County Union for the purpose of performing a geotechnical investigation to facilitate the design of the Midtown Area Western Interceptor improvements for the installation and maintenance of combined sewers in Midtown.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4380? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4380? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4381. Grant an encroachment permit to Cat's Eye Construction Company, 43 Gilbert Street North, Tinson Falls, New Jersey, to install a temporary site security fence within the public right of ways of Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza, East Jersey Street, and Laurel Street during construction of the new Elizabeth Academic High School.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4381? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4381? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4382. Authorize establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Anna Elquaitres. They have 551 vehicles added.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4382? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4382? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4383. Resign ordinance number 4364 adopted March 26, 2013, which authorizes establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Juan Ave. Navidad Unions, 83 Westfield Avenue, established name as reserved space.
Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4383? Anyone would like to speak on ordinance number 4383? Seeing none, closest portion of the meeting. With the consent of my colleagues, I will suspend the reviewing of the petitions and notifications and reports of the city officers and move on ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance number 4385. Authorize establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Marion Perez, 615 First Avenue. Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
If you are reading the ordinance number 4385, what is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second it. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Uh, Councilman Sedenia.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
And, uh, President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on first reading.
Ordinance number 4386. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Brian Soto, 321 South Fifth Street.
If you are reading ordinance number 4386...
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Roll call. Oh, any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on first reading. Public hearing and further consideration of the four ordinance ordinance should take place at the City Council meeting to be held Tuesday, June 11, 2013, at 7:30 PM. Ordinance on final passage.
Ordinance number 4374. Amend Chapter 5.102.20 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Regulation Governing Rates of Taxicap Fares Specifically to Increase Fares Due to Cost of Fuel Insurance and Car Maintenance.
You have heard the ordinance number 4374. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4375. Amend Chapter 5.112 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Traveling Shows and Kitty Rides Specifically to Establish Section 5.112.100, the exemption from the requirements of licensure of amusement, kiddie ride, or kiddie ride operator licensed by the NJ Department of Community Affairs pursuant to NJAC 5014A-1 and so on.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4375. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4376. Amend Chapter 7.52 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth entitled Retail Food Establishments Specifically to More Accurately Reflect Business Establishments Operating Within the City and Establishment of Late Fees and Reinspection Surcharge.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4376. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4377. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Penn Ave Urban Renewal LLC, 715 through 733 Pennsylvania Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption for the construction of a six-story residential building at set address and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an approximate amount of $200,000 compared to the current $38,000.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4377. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Uh...
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4378. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Parker's Walker Urban Renewal LLC, 1970 Brunswick Avenue, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption for the construction of eight buildings at 202 Park Road and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4379. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste. Uh, excuse me. Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4379. An ordinance approving the financial agreement with Heritage Village at Westminster Urban Renewal LLC, 1970 Brunswick Avenue, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, for 30 years tax exemption for the construction of a four-story building for senior citizens at 230 Park Road and will provide initial annual service charge to the city in an amount that approximates current revenues.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4379. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4380. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement and access agreement with the County Union for the purpose of performing a geotechnical investigation to facilitate the design of the Midtown Area Western Interceptor improvements for the installation and maintenance of combined sewers in Midtown.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4380. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4381. Grant an encroachment permit to paid tax construction company, 43 Gilbert Street North, Tinson Falls, New Jersey, to install a temporary site security fence within the public right of ways of Martin Luther King Jr. Plaza, East Jersey Street, Laurel Street during construction of the new Elizabeth Academic High School.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4381. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4382. Authorize establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Anna Elquaitres, 551 Main Avenue.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4382. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final.
Ordinance number 4383. Resign ordinance number 4364 adopted March 26, 2013, which authorizes establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Juan Ave. Navidad Unions, 82 Westfield Avenue, established name as reserved space.
You have heard the reading of ordinance number 4383. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Ordinance passed on final. Motion to suspend another rule. Mr. President, I motion to suspend.
She requested a motion to suspend the rule.
So move. Another second? I second that. So move. Second by Councilman Keenan. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye.
Letter dated May 28, 2013 from the Director of Health and Community Services requesting permission to enter into memorandum of understanding agreement with the Boy Scouts of America and authorize appropriate city officials to execute any and all documents appropriate for approximately 100 uses in tennis league away camp for one week during the summer of 2013. Agreement serves the purpose of making the City of Elizabeth office of youth an official Boy Scout troop which is required for youths to be eligible to attend camp three.
You have heard the reading of ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedenia. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gallinari.
Aye. Resolution passed. Do bid.
Authorizing amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item of revenue a municipal allowance grant in amounts of $77,856, local share $19,464. Authorizing amendment to the fiscal year 2013 budget to insert as an item of revenue a municipal grant in the amount of $155,789.22.
You have heard the reading of the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sodania. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gollman.
Aye.
Resolution passed.
Authorizing proper city officials to submit a request to the Director of Division of Local Finance to make corrections in the city's twenty thirteen fiscal year municipal budget to account for chance, uh, excuse me, change of title or testament of creation approved subsequent to the adopted budget. Authorize the award of a contract to Cherry Town Tractor Sales, thirty-five Route Seventy West, Marlton and NJ, for purchase of parts and repairs for lawn and grounds, equipment for the period May ninth, twenty thirteen through June twenty-eighth, twenty thirteen, at a cost not exceed twenty-five thousand. Authorize the award of a contract to Firefighter One Limited, twenty-six Gale Court, Spartan Jersey, for purchase of SCBA parts for the fire department at a cost of thirty-two thousand sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. Authorize proper city officials to enter into and participate in the Meriden County Cooperative Pricing System at no fee for the purchase of a stump current. Authorize renewal of a contract with Western World Insurance Company, forty-eight South Franklin Turnpike, Ramsey, New Jersey, through the agent of record Hughes Plumber and Associates, Summer Grove, New Jersey, covering emergency medical malpractice liability insurance for ambulance drivers on attendance for the period June fifteenth, twenty thirteen to June fifteenth, twenty fourteen, at an annual premium of seven thousand one hundred and fifty. Authorize the award of a contract to Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated, twenty-six hundred American Drive, Appleton, Wisconsin, for the purchase of one model two-twenty-two Pierce ARX team plumber with options for the fire department at total cost of four hundred and forty thousand, thirty-eight dollars and ten cents.
You have heard the reading of these resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Local?
Councilwoman Perkins Augustin.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sodania. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gollman.
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing the award of a contract to Sherman Williams Company, one-one Prospect Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio, for purchase of traffic paint under the Union County Co-op for the period May sixteen, twenty thirteen through May sixteen, twenty fifteen, at a cost not exceed fifty thousand. Authorize the award respective contracts to Global COBFI Seventy Westville Road, Marlton, New Jersey, in amount of three thousand seven hundred thirty-two ninety-six cents, and exemplous corporation COBFI Sixty-four Fifteen Catal- Catalina Avenue, Cypress, California, in amount of one thousand six hundred fourteen dollars, for the purchase of furniture for the police department at total cost of five thousand three hundred forty-six and ninety-six cents. Authorize the award of a contract to Atlantic Tactical Incorporated, seven sixty-three Corporate Circle, New Comfort Room, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of thirty LWRCI Model M-six SLG rifles and three Model M-six, uh, G rifles for the police department in total amount of fifty-six thousand six hundred thirty-two and seventy-four cents. Authorizing amendment to resolution adopted May eighth, twenty twelve, approving resolution of need for eighty-four family homes, Urban Renewal LLC, supply for financial assistance of New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, please to reduce the number of units from fifty-two to thirty-six and reduce the number of buildings from three to one on the property located one fifty-eight to one sixty-eight first street with eight units dedicated as special needs housing for the homeless. Authorizing amendment to resolution adopted February, February twenty-eighth, twenty twelve, to modify the renting hassle, program deferred payment loan to Y Homes Incorporated, and YMCA based in New York specifically to increase the loan additional one hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty cents, provide for further rehabilitation of said project at one thirty-five Madison Avenue, raising the amount to one million two hundred eighty thousand four hundred twenty dollars and five cents. Authorize proper city officials to submit a proposal to New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds to provide funding in the amount of two hundred sixty thousand dollars, two hundred forty-nine and sixty cents, for the commercial district security program to conduct walking police patrols throughout the business districts, with the city providing a twenty percent match in amount of sixty-five thousand, six, sixty-two dollars and thirty cents, for total project cost of three hundred twenty-five thousand and three, uh, three hundred twelve dollars for the period July first, twenty thirteen through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen.
You have heard the reading of these resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Local?
Councilwoman Perkins Augustin.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sodania. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gollman.
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Authorizing approval for the fiscal year twenty fourteen, Urban Enterprise Zone Administration Budget and anticipated UEZ Assistance Funds in the amount of two hundred twenty thousand and entering agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company for the administration of the UEZ program and the UEZ second generation funds for the period July first, twenty thirteen through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Authorizing proper city officials to submit a proposal to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds in the amount of two hundred nine thousand three hundred twenty-seven to fund two police officer salaries and benefits for police security, with the city providing twenty percent match in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred thirty-two, for total project cost of five hundred twenty thousand two hundred eighty-four for the period July first, twenty thirteen through July thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Authorize proper city officials to submit a proposal to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone Authority for the use of City of Elizabeth Zone Assistance Funds in the amount of one million four hundred fifty-six thousand sixty-four dollars for the Urban Enterprise Zone and Second General, General Funds Financial Lending Programs based seven for the period July first, twenty thirteen through June thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Authorizing proper city officials to reprogram and transfer unexpendant balances to the community development block grants holding accounts listed on Schedule A on file in City Clerk's Office in the amount of three thousand three hundred eighty-four and sixty-six cents. Establish line on the property located at one seventy-two Bryant Street in amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred for demolition of said premises. Establish line on the property located at two fifty-six Second Street in amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred for demolition of said premises. Establish lines for the boarding of properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Clerk's Office in a total amount of three thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty cents.
You have heard the reading of these resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments? Local?
Councilwoman Perkins Augustin.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Uh.
Councilman Rover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sodania. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gollman.
Aye.
All resolutions passed.
Establish lines for the removal and disposal of debris and properties listed on Schedule A on file in the City Clerk's Office in a total amount of one thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Authorize proper city officials to execute all necessary documents for the New Jersey Department of Transportation, twenty thirteen National Infrastructure Investments Tiger Discretionary Grants in amount not exceed eighteen billion, eighteen million, sorry, excuse me, for the reconstruction of fifty traffic signal systems at intersections throughout the community. Authorize the award of contracts to Applied Landscape Technologies Incorporated, one forty-five River Road, Montego, New Jersey, for renovations to Joseph A. O'Brien Playground in amount of two million two hundred sixty-two thousand. Authorize the establishment of the pickup drop off area in front of the Little School House, one oh two through one ten third street, Monday through Friday between the hours of seven AM to nine AM and two PM to four PM. Grant permission to the Morris Midtown Business Association, P.O., Box four forty-three, Elizabeth and Coco Bamba Productions, to host their tenth annual Columbia Independence Day Festival on Sunday, July twenty-first, twenty thirteen, on Morris Avenue from Xavier Street to Julian Place and Westfield Avenue between North Broad Street and Harrison Street, from twelve noon to nine PM with the rain date of July twenty-eighth to August fourth, twenty thirteen. Pay utility bills, approve bingo and raffle licenses.
You have heard the reading of these resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions for a vote.
Move then second. Any comments?
Madam President, I'd like to make a comment regarding the amendment for Orion Fields. I would like to state that this would be a great opportunity to not only bring our children together in a safe environment, but to help them interact with each other. As we know, South Korea is a big sport and it helps bring people from all nations together, so we hope that we have your support.
Anyone else? Local?
Councilwoman Perkins Augustin.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Rover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sodania. Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gollman.
Aye.
All resolutions passed. Commendations. Bill Smith Fisher, eighteenth birthday, and for making hundreds of kosher meals daily for local seniors. Reverend R. Lexton Buffalo, twenty-fifth anniversary, twenty-second year, William Henry Russell. Any more commendations?
Mr. President, I would like to add a commendation. I would like to commend Councilwoman Patricia Perkins Augustin for being an elected official in our service for the last twenty years since nineteen ninety-three. Despite the inconvenience anyone in each chamber might add, we mean it's honor and knowledge of service and sacrifices to our colleagues. Thank you, Councilwoman. Congratulations for reaching that milestone.
Any more commendations? Memorial? Joseph Yuchi, husband of Susan Yuchi, Elizabeth Home Improvement, Maria DiPaola, aunt of Rocco DiPaola, second assistant city attorney. Louis C. Prusby Wallace, Paul Zola, Oklahoma tornado victim. Any more memorials? Yet?
Memorial for city's women, Maria's father's mother. Maria's father's mother.
Any more memorials? And we all stand for one. Thank you for the memorial. Councilman Adams, come forward.
Anna Maria Valentin. Kendall Simmons. Deniala Okunemi. Alexis. Daisy Sinchi. Cynthia Norris. Leslie Oyala. April Santos. Jonathan Bruce. Arco de Garcia. Take a picture tonight. Jonathan Herblaw, Donovan did a great job. Anjita Raniya. Rabida Roche. Zdenia Lynch. Anna Forstig. Leslie Abiaga. Victoria De Knight, Correa. Ifladi Waiasien. I'll get a fix. Angie Siegavon. Javier Alves. Christopher Walters. Alyssa Jeter. Geraldine Green. Aaron Tate. Ivan Olivera. Christian Mendoza. Sean Akins. Simon Sopier. Javier Sanchez. Nina Walms. Tatavika Rodriguez. Anna Perian. Michelle Colonia. Jessica Halsa. Jessica. Justin Rivera. Gabriela Ramos, Jose Maya, Patrick. And Jose Maya, if you're here, I want some of my certificate, I have the name in the jersey. I'm gonna place your name here. Yeah. We're going to fix the name on this one. I have all times. Any by name? Okay, those people, folks on Patrick, if you're here, just see me or the city board that gave this certificate, right?
Thank you to all the students that participated in Houston City Government Day and have a great summer. Motion to adjourn.
Soon.
Be adjourned.